Good evening. We will call this meeting to order for the February 10th, 2022, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audiences this evening and make a brief announcement before we begin. For our in-person attendees, when your name is called, please come forward, approach the podium to address the council. For our virtual attendees, if you have an item for the audience participation portion, please press the raised hand symbol in your meeting and the meeting organizer will allow you to speak. With that, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda for this evening. And Tom, do we have any changes tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have two suggested revisions or acknowledgements on the agenda. We have an item on the regular agenda, 5B. This relates to a public hearing on the vacation of Gardenia Avenue and 151st Street right away. That item is not ready for action tonight, so we would ask that that be postponed to your meeting in second meeting in February. And Kathy Bodmer will address that issue when we get to that on the agenda. And then the second item, the last item, which is an update to your calendar of upcoming events, item number seven on your agenda.
Thank you. So, Tom, just to be clear, we're not removing 5B, but we will just ask for council to postpone that item when we get there, correct? Okay. With those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion from Grendal, second, from Bergman, I think. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the agenda carries. Next item is our audience participation portion. This is for items that are not otherwise on the regular agenda. We do have a total of 10 minutes allocated for this item this evening. I'm going to start with the virtual attendees. Meeting organizer, are there any virtual attendees who would like to speak?
There is no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. We have two folks who signed up to speak. We'll take them first, and if there's anyone else after who would like to speak, we will take them. The first one on my list is Bill Butler, and Mr. Butler, would you come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you for allowing me time to address the City Council of Apple Valley. My name is Bill Butler. I'm the president of Butler &amp; Associates Insurance Agency located at 15322 Galaxy Avenue at the Shops in Galaxy. I'm here this evening to address the Apple Valley City Council about my concerns as an Apple Valley business owner on a number of incidents this past year at Pinino Brothers. June 2021, two individuals were allegedly at Pinino Brothers prior to one of them allegedly murdering the other one in Lakeville. 8/17 and 8/28 of 2021 fights resulting in fifth-degree assault charges. 9/11 2021 selling of alcohol to a minor. 10/16, 10/30, and 11/21, public disturbance. And this past week, on 2/7, an incident in the parking lot of Pinino Brothers, which what I understand to be multiple individuals discharging firearms at 1:58 a.m. According to the Apple Valley City Code, licensees in the city of Apple Valley under Section 111.3011 and 12, conditions and special considerations, licensees are responsible for actions attributable to their business, and licensees are liable for actions to their employees. These situations are clearly attributable and directly responsible to Pinino Brothers and conduct attributed to their business. Pinino Brothers posted on their social media site about the firearms incident occurring on 2/7 that they are adjusting their hours, no one was injured, and no one was targeted, and they're working to solve the problem. Their post makes it sound like this is no big deal and everything is okay, and is most certainly not. I'm worried about my employees' safety along with my business reputation by operating at the same location and sharing an address with Pinino Brothers. I'm asking myself, will my clients feel safe coming to my business? Will this type of behavior continue? Do I need to look for other locations for my insurance agency if things do not change? I've addressed these concerns to the building owners as well as the Apple Valley Police Department, and Police Captain Greg Dollstrom has been outstanding in his communication with me in this matter. I would like to know what's being done by the city of Apple Valley and the city council to address what is becoming a disturbing pattern over the last year at Pinino Brothers beyond what the Apple Valley Police Department is currently taking action on. Thank you for your time and your interest in this very serious matter, and I would request that my remarks be read into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We don't always spend a lot of time on comments, but we'll take a couple if we have some, and then kind of go from there, so we can just get everybody in. Mr. Goodman?
I'm sorry, I should have hit this.
That's all right.
Well, we have a lot of faith in our police department, our two captains that are outstanding. And any advice and the chief, any advice we get from them, we're going to listen to. This thing has its place, while it's... And I'm with you. I've lived here 40 years. We never had a shoot. We didn't have this kind of crap going on 40 years ago. And it's, no, it's very upsetting, and I agree.
Yeah, I'll say, update, I do know that the PD has been in contact with both the building owner and the owner of the establishment since then. Mr. Butler, when you contacted me Tuesday morning, I guess it was Monday night, whatever it was, when you sent me the message, actually a message from the administrator at about the same time, so I think they've kept us pretty well updated, and we will see how it reacts from there, but it's certainly got everybody's attention. It's been a long time since we've talked about a revocation of a liquor license, but that is within our authority, and if that's the direction this goes, we will play that out, so. I think Tom said it right. I trust the PD to start this process, and we will take their advice as we go from there, so. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, did you have one?
I had one.
Okay, sorry.
To tackle question, Councilman Goodman, we don't take this stuff lightly. And one of the things that brought me to Apple Valley in 89 was we got robbed up in Minneapolis, and that kind of broke a trust that I had with the city. So this is not some behavior that we're going to want or tolerate down here. The police department has done an excellent job. I expect that to continue. And I don't think there'll be any, you know, shame on you kind of thing with this fellow or people that are responsible for it. Actions have consequences, and this is something we don't tolerate down here, so.
Thank you. And Bill, we're happy your business is in Apple Valley.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that.
Please stay here.
So, thank you. Next, we have Sheila. Sheila, would you mind coming forward? And completely up to your comfort, if it's easier to speak, to remove your mask, please feel free to do so.
Thank you. I had a biopsy done on my lip, so, for cancer. My name is Sheila. I do live here in Apple Valley. And I'm here tonight to discuss your consent to sign that you did on November 9th that was done on the council meeting on November 10th. Did you, as a council, did you receive the memorandum? Did you receive what the settlement agreement is? Did you receive this as a council?
Prior to...
Prior to signing the agreement? So, did you read it? Do you have an opportunity to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. I would really suggest that you read it because it has some really good recommendations in there as to how to use the opioid money that's going to be coming, the settlement money. There was no public forum to discuss that consent to sign in the regards to what's going on with the opioid settlement agreement. I don't know if you are aware of it, but Burnsville was the last city to hold out on signing that agreement. They ended up having to be, have an open forum meeting, a special night called session, for opening it up to an open forum to discuss with their citizens and other people about the opioid settlement. The meeting lasted for over four hours, and the conclusion was they did end up voting 3-2 in favor of the settlement, okay? They were the last city to hold out. All cities and counties in the state of Minnesota needed to sign off on that settlement agreement in order for the state of Minnesota to receive that money that is being offered by the drug manufacturers. I don't know if you're aware of what's happening with the opioid settlement, but everybody in this room, everybody in this room, I can guarantee, has some exposure to someone who has been addicted, has overdosed, or is in need of pain relief. And I'm sorry if you've experienced death. That's probably the most tragic outcome that's coming from illegal opioids out on the street. In 2020, it's going to be, the stats aren't in yet, but it's predicted to be over 100,000 deaths related to the opioid epidemic. Organizations have shared a lot of misinformation regarding opioids. In 2019, only 10% to 15% of opioid deaths were from prescription drugs. Out of those 15%, 7% of that was accidental. The rest of the deaths are attributed to other illegal drugs. It is not from prescription opioids. Now, that's not to say it's not happening, because I agree it is happening. The epidemic is serious. It's a big problem. I think it's going to end up superseding alcoholism, to be honest with you. The misinformation that I provided you, the very first one came from Dave Armak, from the League of Minnesota Cities. In his webinar on December 9th, 2021, 3.31 or 4.6 into the video as it starts, this is his statement, "Prescription opioids account for the greatest number of opioid deaths in our state." That was on public record. That's a lie. Later on in the video, you'll have AG Keith Ellison speak up and say that, no, it is actually clearly stated that it is illegal fentanyl that is driving the opioid epidemic. But that misinformation is being spread widely. Well, in 2016, CDC came out with guidelines, and the pendulum swung all the way to the other side, crackdown on opioids. It's all from prescriptions. I'm not going to read the causes of deaths and everything, but I am going to go over the drugs. One is fentanyl and cocaine, and the fentanyl is illegal. That's coming from Mexico and China. The problem is, is when there is an overdose death in Dakota County, state of Minnesota, it is not known which fentanyl they died from. In the beginning, in 2016, they automatically labeled it as prescription opioid, which indeed was not true. With that, 87% of the deaths are caused from illegal fentanyl. Along with the fentanyl, you have cocaine, and you have synthetic opioids such as methadone. Synthetic opioids other than the methadone, which is used to treat people who are addicted, so we're indeed feeding the addict. 73% of those deaths were in 2019 that weren't from methadone. That's a lot. Heroin is in one in four deaths for every 100,000 Americans. Methamphetamine is not an opioid, but it is classified in the opioid category. Death tripled from methamphetamine from 2015 to 2019. During my research, I was heartbroken to see how many sixth graders have tried methamphetamine. Sixth graders, we're talking about 12-year-olds. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, methamphetamine is highly, highly addictive. It's said that most of the time they take it, a person will take it, and they're instantly addicted, which I would believe to be true. Also are the psychostimulants, which is, and it can be illicit or legal. Illicit is like ecstasy, and illicit is like, or non-illicit would be like ADHD medication. Those deaths rose up 29% from 2018 to 2019. There is the last drug, which is a, it's called a polysubstance, and what that is, is it's a combination of one or more of those drugs brought in together that has been found in the autopsy and in the results of the overdose death. 85% of those overdose deaths are illicit manufactured fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamine. This is supported by the CDC. It is not prescription opioid drugs that are doing this. So this is what's driving the opioid epidemic. It's not prescription opioids. Not to say that somebody who had been a prescription for opioids didn't become addicted. That does happen. No different than somebody who gets a first taste of alcohol and becomes addicted. It's addictive behavior. What I want to talk to you tonight is about the memorandum of agreement that you signed off on, okay? In Exhibit A, in that report, right here, this is the report that came out, right here, all these pages. I didn't want to copy them for him because I was hoping that you did read them.
Yeah, we have them, yes.
Good. I'm glad you did.
I'm going to, Sheila, I'm just going to say, I'll give you plenty of time, right? We'll make sure everybody's got time. I would like to wrap this up in about five minutes so we can continue, but that will leave you ample time, I think, so I want to be... This is interesting stuff. It's important stuff, so I don't want to cut you off too early.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. Thank you. The allocation of money and the ideas that they have to fight the epidemic between the OUD and SUDs, I don't know if you know the difference, OUD is opioid use disorder, and SUD is substance use disorder. The only difference is SUDs include alcohol, okay? The allocation of money is over the course of 18 years from the drug companies. Burnsville is getting $1.1 million. Ooh, sounds great. Over 18 years, though. Apple Valley is going to get about $800,000 to be spent over 18 years in allocation. That's all you're going to get. Now, not to say that that can't be used for good. Absolutely. When I talked to Captain Dollstrom, I said, what that can put, they could put naloxone into the schools, it can be put into the squad cars.
Exactly.
It's not that it can't be used for good. However, you have now signed off that you can no longer, as a city, a county, a state, go after any other drug companies to sue them for the opioid epidemic. However, nowhere in this memorandum is there anything regarding intractable pain. Nowhere. So I ask you, do I look normal to you? Am I responding to you? Am I acting accordingly? Okay? I have intractable pain. I'm able to be here tonight because of my opioid prescription. I have what's called thoracic outlet syndrome. 1% of the population has this. And out of the 1% that have this, 95% have what I have, which is neurogenic, which is nerves. I went undiagnosed for five years. I have a lot of nerve damage. There was nobody in the state of Minnesota who could treat me. There's only five top docs in the United States. I had to go down to St. Louis, Missouri to get my diagnosis and to get my surgery. I had my first rib removed. I had my mid and anterior scaly muscle removed. I have one muscle left on this side of my neck, okay? I also had what's called a pec minor release where they cut the pec minor away. That releases the five nerves that come out of your neck that run down to your arm. I was doing really good right after surgery, relieved 85% of my pain. Great. I can live with a pain level of two or three. Thanks, Purdue. I can live with that. But in 2016, I slipped on the steps at work. I didn't fall, but I jerked backwards, set everything back in motion. I've seen my surgeon down in St. Louis now five times. He wants to do surgery again. Do you know why I won't do surgery? Because I'm afraid of pain. I'm afraid of what's coming down the chute that's going to prevent me from getting the pain management I need. And I'll tell you right now, as I told Councilman Goodman, I will not live that way. I will not be on this earth because I'm not going to live that way. So people suffer from intractable pain, and there's a big population out there, and they're afraid to come forward. And one of the reasons is because of the stigmatism. And I'm sorry, I'm going to use Apple Valley as an example. I came in and I talked to Pam regarding the settlement and the consent to sign. She was very generous and giving me everything I needed. And I said, and I came back the next day, went up, and I said, can I please have somebody call me on this so I could get this possibly on the agenda? Because I knew it was going to take me a little bit of time. So who did I get a phone call from the next day? The police department. Why? Because I want to discuss opioids. Now, how is that for stigmatism? Because I want to talk about opioids and responsible prescribing, that I get a call from the police department. That's not okay. That's the stigmatism that comes with it. So what I'm asking, though, is that in that settlement money, when it comes in August, that you think about the people who have intractable pain and how we can benefit from some of that money as well, okay? June 1st, 2022, the city of Apple Valley has to have a work group and a report in place and submit it to the state of Minnesota. I don't know if you're aware of that. So what I'm asking is, when that work group does meet and come forward with their idea of how they're going to spend their money, all I ask is to allocate some of that for people with intractable pain. Some of the things that could be offered is free safes to keep our opioids in, so they can't get stolen.
Right. We're at time. Can I just say, thank you for coming in, right? This is important stuff. This was on, this was on an agenda item when we had it, so it wasn't, you know, like we did in the back room or something kind of thing.
That's my fault for not being aware. But I am going to ask one more thing.
All right. Hold on one second. Our intent in this is not to use any of this to layer regulation on those. I have witnessed good friends in the addiction side of this after pain treatment, but also probably the same number who are like you, up and moving because of access to, right? So you get both sides of that, absolutely, and when we kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? Then we miss the good that comes out of these in trying to present the pain. That doesn't... These things were approved and presented because they do have a benefit. It's when we, it's when they get out of control that becomes the problem, so.
The harm is overcoming everything else.
Exactly.
I am going to ask one more thing. Senator Clausen and Representative Biermann.
Right.
Are listening to the bill.
We're actually talking to them tomorrow, so.
I am talking to them on Saturday, and I've already talked to them last month. I'm asking you, I'm begging you, please, support them and support this bill when it comes up for legislation, please. If you need to contact me, Pam.
Pam has, I know Pam has your contact info, yes. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Not tonight, but I think, oh, go ahead. Tom, I'll let you start, and then we'll take some quick ones and move on.
There's a couple of questions, sir. First of all, the money coming in. I've seen settlements before, and when you have settlements, everybody's got to get something out of it. It's two separate issues. The money that we're getting, we can put to good use, and you recommended some good things. But the other thing, this nonsense, the doctors can't work with their patients to prescribe opioid pills without the hail of thunder coming down on them is ridiculous. I've talked to, I'm sorry, Representative Biermann's office, and he was not in. But I left a message that said I intend to testify on this bill. I am familiar with people that I know my age, I'm 77, that have intractable pain, and they can't get anything more than the crap you can buy over the counter, which is ridiculous. But that's another, you know, that's a whole different story, but I'll tell you right now, I intend to testify on this bill.
Thank you, and I appreciate the support.
Thank you, Tom. I'm just going to go down the line, if that's okay. So, John, go ahead, and then we'll take others as we just go that direction.
This topic is of importance to everybody in the United States. The importance of it is, a comment was made in regards to the police division being the ones that are the answer to some of our questions. And right now, in my opinion, the police have been handling the situation for all the right reasons, and they are answered to some of what was presented tonight. The matter at hand, and it's been mentioned to our representatives, which is really interesting, is it's... We got to work up the hill now when stuff that we don't like always comes down the hill. And it's interesting now that Clausen, and I'm glad he is, and the other representatives are going to be part of it because that's the answer. The unfortunate part for where we sit here, it's a local level. I get the fact that there's money given and everybody had to sign off on that. That's really out of our control. Did we believe we did the right thing? I believe we did by the people that are running and have to deal with the patients that are out there that are the front line and when they're walking through the street. And I truly believe they did us due diligence, and I hope they continue with their ideas and process. But it's interesting, and I'm glad you came forward to speak tonight on what's important to citizens that really need it, that don't abuse it.
And then our can in the squads has been absolutely life-saving, right, in more instances than, yeah.
Well, as a prescription opioid user, I'm required to have it in my home.
You're right, because that could apply to you everywhere as much as the addict, absolutely.
I have it in my home, and I have it in my car as well.
Yeah.
That's the kind of use, that's a real good use that we're going to use this money for.
Yep. And just to give you other information and background information, I did participate since October of 2017 with the opioid task force up at the DHS. I attended every meeting but two, and so I can tell you how our voices fell on deaf ears and who made up that task force, and we were not represented.
You're going to be represented by this council, I'll tell you that.
We'll take Ruth's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know people that have chronic pain that have been cut off also. But I've also, since a number of years, served on the Board of Pharmacy's prescription monitoring program.
That's excellent.
And so I'm very familiar with, and I work at a board, that my doctors, if they have a DEA license, they're required to have a prescription monitoring account. So my question here is, is 152 the statute you're trying to change? Is that the Board of Pharmacy?
It's not going to change. Well, it is going to change. The wording is going to change.
Is it the Board of Pharmacy, though? Is it their statute? Because I'm going to suggest that you work with the Board of Pharmacy also here because they're highly influential at the legislature on all this. So I'm guessing that 152, I'm 153, so I'm guessing 152 possibly is the Board of Pharmacy. And you might want to talk to Cody, the executive director there.
I would have, Congressman, I was imagining through Pam, because in the sign with Pam's got contact info. You can probably make sure Sheila knows who to contact on that one as well.
Wonderful. Because the PDMP or PMP is an important component because what is classified as illegal fentanyl, you double-check through the PDMP to make sure it wasn't a prescription opioid, a prescription fentanyl. And that is part of the problem of the First Statistics Act.
And the issue is doctor shopping, and there's dentists and the nurses and even vet med is sitting at the table for the PMP program. And so, I mean, we hear some stories of doctor shopping that you wouldn't believe.
And it happens, absolutely. I go to a pain clinic, and I'm in tune with my doctor, and he tells me all kinds of things that are going to happen, and it's unbelievable what extent people go through to get opioids.
Exactly. Thank you.
I'll look at the legislation that you're proposing that they're doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Clausen and Mierman are behind it.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not on any of the agendas as of right now. And hopefully, I get alerts every day, and hopefully, they don't sneak up with one like they did today with regards to treatment centers.
That's what's unfortunate in the legislative session, is much of that ends up...
I'm finding that out.
Much of it ends up very quickly happening or an omniscipity, and we end up with things we don't have time to testify on.
I got an update at noon for 1:00, a meeting.
That's pretty, I've hung out at the Capitol all day waiting for things to pop up, just in case, so. Sheila, thank you for coming in, sharing your story and your research.
I appreciate you taking the time to listen, and you can read through my other material that I had available.
Thanks for providing that. It's hard to take this all in as you're listening here, so I appreciate that.
And I made it big enough so you didn't have to wear your cheaters.
There's a lot of unintended consequences. I mean, it's pure to the thing to start with, we had noble aspirations, but, you know, this gets caught in with it, and folks like you are caught in the middle. My wife broke four ribs, two of them in two places, and they grilled her to give her four pills for the pain. If anybody's ever hurt their ribs, this, that's nothing.
Nonsense.
What I see, Mr. Mayor, appears to me this is the Board of Medical Practice. And it would probably go way beyond them. I'll have to read this, but it has to go way beyond them for physicians. And we have pediatric medicine doctors and nurses can prescribe, and so it just says physicians in here.
Yes, and it's going to be changed. It's going to...
It's going to, that's part of the changes that's coming. It's going to say, um, doctors, specialists, and nurse practitioners, and physician assistants. So those words will be added into it. So there's, it's, there's more being added into it to protect, um, the doctors and the clinics that are prescribing. My doctor, honestly, was brought before the AG and the DEA, not once but twice. You know how expensive his attorney was?
Yep.
That's a real problem.
It is.
It is a problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, again. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me, um, call me or email me. Thank you. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. That moved, that, that, uh, we did give the virtual audience, so that does close our audience participation portion. We will move on to the consent agenda items. These are generally routine and will be connected with one motion unless a council member wishes to pull an item. A council member, are there any items, agenda items, excuse me, consent agenda items you would like to pull? I will ask our meeting organizer, is anyone from the public who would like to pull a consent agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one who'd like to pull any items.
Thank you. Looking at the audience in the room, is there any items that they would like to discuss separately? If not, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, move.
Motion from, Melander, second, from Goodman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, consent carries, that moves us on to item 5A, uh, which, uh, like Samantha and Jessica have, which is to review the 2021 rainwater rewards program. Jessica just abandoning you completely?
Sometimes.
All right.
Never, I'm kidding. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me. I'm Samantha Berger, I'm the Water Resource Specialist as part of the Natural Resources Division at the city of Apple Valley. Today, we're going to be talking about the rainwater rewards program that we've been running since 2009. I'm just going to go over a bit, bit of a summary of what the program's about, the projects that we installed this year, and then talk a little about the native planting efforts in the city as well. So as a reminder, um, in 2020, we revised this program, kind of simplified the program and, um, made it, made it easier for residents to participate for those who are interested in installing rain gardens, shoreline projects, and native gardens. We will pay for 50% of project costs, up to $500 for those types of projects. And we also partner with Landscaping for Clean Water, which is a workshop provided by the Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation Districts to offer courses to help residents design their projects and ultimately install them. So they are currently, through the pandemic, offering virtual courses. So those are offered on March 7th, April 5th, and May 5th, sorry, May 4th. And there you can get to up to $250. So residents participating in this can, in a way, get up to $750 to install a project on their property. So here's just a summary of where we've come. Unfortunately, this year, we only had three projects, which across the county, numbers were down, likely due to the pandemic and maybe in a way because of the drought that we experienced this year, kind of held people off from wanting to do landscaping projects that would require some, some watering to get those stabilized. But over time, what we know is that these native plants are very beneficial because they are drought tolerant, and so they can, they're probably the ones that were sustained throughout this drought that we had this past year, so. This is just kind of where we've come. What you can see here is just the dollars spent, and then the projects installed in the light green there. Here's just a map of all the different projects that we have installed since 2009. And here are just the three different projects that we have. Now, I'm just going to kind of walk through the three projects that we funded. So here, we actually had a repeat. We have the residents who actually installed a second rain garden. It's always great to see the rain gardens that are installed in the front yard, just to help people recognize what the project is. They do always get a sign from the Dakota Soil and Water Conservation District when they're participating in that program. So here, we just have the approximate location. You can see where that existing garden is up here. And then here, we kind of have the before and the after. What I like about this image is you can actually see the, the storm catch basin here, so we know that it's doing some good with treating the runoff coming off the roof before it would ultimately enter into the catch basin. And this homeowner actually has the stormwater pond in his backyard, so he's helping protect that as well. Additional project here, um, this one is in a newer development, which is nice to see compared to, if you look at the neighbors, you can just see all of the sod that they have. So this homeowner actually put in both a native garden and a rain garden. Here we have the after of the project, I didn't have a before, but I think if you kind of look through the fence line, you can see what, what everyone else is working with in their properties. So hopefully, as people see this, they'll become more encouraged to get some more diversity within their landscape, both to help pollinators and to help provide water quality treatment. Our final project here was more of a pocket planting, just adjacent to the home. I like seeing stuff like this because it really shows the, the different types of projects you can do, um, just along your home. And also, you know, you can just do a pocket to help, help with those pollinators, which is always great to see. This one was especially nice because they really took great photos of the, the life of the project, from delineating where it would be to adding the sand media, putting in the topsoil, getting that edging in place with the mulch, and then ultimately kind of planning out where they're going to put their plants, and then the final result here as well. So it's kind of nice to see the progression there. So kind of moving on, um, what has the city been doing for our native planting efforts? So what we're looking to do is we're, we're trying to do long-term maintenance on those projects that we've installed that have included native plantings. So those are shown in both the, um, the blue and the orange, um, blue being rain gardens and orange just being, um, kind of buffer areas along stormwater ponds that we are maintaining. In addition, as we, uh, move through different projects, we're always adding that native seed mix to increase the habitat that we have throughout the city, establish more pollinators, and also provide that water quality treatment as well. So in terms of establishing the new, here's just a picture of Erickson Park that's just been finished. Here we have it blanketed, and over time, we should see those native seeds coming up. The one thing about seeding is sometimes it does take a few years for those to establish, but once they do, they really, they really do flourish. And so other projects that we've done is Sunset Park Pond, Redwood Park Pond, which we just expanded, and then, as many of you have probably seen, those Johnny Cake Ridge Road Stormwater Areas along the corridor, that was just reconstructed a few years ago. Here we have just a photo of, um, the Sunset Park. This one's unique, it's got an actual iron-enhanced sand filter, and that actually helps provide some additional phosphorus removal before water discharges into Lake Almagnet. And you can see, we've kind of got the buffer area here, and you can see over time how, how nice things can look. In addition to establishing new, we also look to maintain the old. Here we have a photo of the Hayes Community Center, um, one of the rain gardens that we installed a few years back. In addition, we're looking to, um, keep those areas weed-free and maintain other areas such as, uh, Long Lake. We did some iron-enhanced sand filters and some rain gardens in that neighborhood. Cedar Avenue, we have some different ponding areas that we're, um, maintaining, actually with the help of a JPA with the county, so they, they help provide funds for that as well. Garrett Avenue has some rain gardens that were installed as part of the, um, street reconstruction projects or the home reconstruction. Embry Path Park, we're restoring the, the areas there. And as mentioned, the Hayes Community Center rain garden. In addition, it's great when we have these contractors out there maintaining the vegetation, they'll send us updates, and we actually did have a spotting of a rusty patch bumblebee, which is on the endangered species list. So even a small little rain garden in a, in a developed city can, can provide habitat. So I think that's a good message to recognize for people. And lastly, um, we're looking to develop for the better. So when we're, we're having different projects that are installing stormwater ponds, we do require them to put a buffer around those areas. So here's just a few examples of new developments that we require to have the buffers as part of their development projects. In addition, we look to put up these signs where appropriate and where needed, just to remind folks of what we're doing. What I like about this is that it's, it's a nicer looking sign with the, the softness of the vegetation and such, so. And over time, we will look to maintain those as well. So moving forward, um, we'll like to continue the buzz, as we say, we'll continue with the simplified program. And despite the fact that we've only had three applications last year, we already actually have two applications that have come through this year. So we're in good shape. We do like to continue to advertise those during our lake association meetings, doing targeted mailings when appropriate, although those mailings sometimes aren't as effective as we would like them to be. We're still pushing forward, and we're, we're hoping that ultimately everyone's recognizing that just a small area can really make an impact. With that, I'll open it up for any questions, and otherwise, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Samantha. John, you had one?
Thanks, council member, or mayor. Two, uh, one comment, one question. The question I have is, this project has been going on since 2009. Does your division go back and look at the projects that have been done, and are they still maintained? Like a lot of projects, people let them go.
Sure. So that.
I have one, one other. Go ahead.
Okay, sure, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bergman. So that, that's a great question, and I think that as part of our program, we have a five-year typical maintenance agreement. And so generally, it's kind of compliance-based. I know that, that when they are getting those SWCD dollars, the Soil and Water Conservation dollars, those are inspected. At this time, we're looking to maybe improve that, um, maintenance, looking at the maintenance of those over time. I think most, generally, landowners are very excited to be doing this, and so they're passionate about what they're doing. But I think what we really could do is utilize the asset management system we have, Cartograph, to kind of get those mapped so that we can have those more on a routine basis of doing inspections, and so I think that would be a good move for this program moving forward.
The last comment I have, because it's interesting to me, so if you would go back, you show a picture of a tree overhanging a rainforest that you just had, or a rain garden that you just put in. If you look at that picture, the canopy of that tree is basically covering a lot of the rain garden. Correct me if I'm wrong, a drip line on a tree is at the edge of that. So how does that rain garden, which was by the drain, work when most of it over the canopy is dripping closer outside of that, of that, uh, edging that you have in there? If you look at that, you show this nice, beautiful tree, it's beautiful.
It was runoff from the roof.
No, it was a runoff from the roof.
That was runoff from the roof and the rain gutter on that one.
So if you go back, if you can go back to that one, it looked like, and I guess that's at the beginning, sorry. I mean, it was interesting that.
Sorry, this is the best way.
The mouse is not playing nice, is it?
Well, anyway, the canopy, you, you show a beautifully landscaped area underneath that tree, that's not part of the rain garden? I assume it is.
It is.
Yes. Councilmember, Councilmember Bergman, if I can answer your question, Mayor Hoopa had it right in the fact that there's, it's, it's taking the runoff from the, from the roof. So there's a pop-up drain.
There's a downspout.
Yeah, a downspout that directs.
The picture does deceive.
It would normally be running over the grass.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you're back, you're almost there.
Yeah, you're close.
Oh, here's the clicker.
Okay, so, I get it. So then, okay, you got the canopy, you're running it off the roof, I get that. So then, why would you put edging that's closest to the building? Why would you have edging? Because water is going to go around that edging and not flow into that rain garden.
There's a pop-up on the rain gutter inside the.
No, but what I'm saying is, see the edging on the backside? Okay, so it's a pop-up is coming into the rain garden or into that mulch area, or is it coming into the grass?
Yeah, it would go into the mulch area.
So then it gets washed away, some of it gets washed away and goes into.
So I think on all of these, we're striving for improvement, not perfection? Am I right?
Right, I'm striving for improvement, but it looked, just that picture looked like, wait a minute.
You know, pictures can be deceiving, I guess, and what I would say is, what we try to utilize is double-shredded mulch, which doesn't move as much. And they work directly with designers who have installed and designed hundreds of these, so I think, understand your point, but I think that this.
Tell me why you wouldn't use rubber mulch?
Because these are natural areas. These are natural areas, rubber isn't really a.
Well, yes, but it's.
Isn't really part of the intent of doing a native garden. And the mulch breaks down over time and adds nutrients to the plants.
Okay. Interesting, that's the only, that's the comment I.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
These are fun to see, and I know there's other resources out on the website as well. Well, not rain garden, because we're on a hill, we've got probably two-thirds of our backyard in, uh, in some sort of native planting mulch, right? It's just nice to not have to mow the soil, even if you don't care about the rain garden, right, to not have to, uh, push that a lot more up and down the hill, as it is a heck of a bonus, too, so. But, um.
How many children do you have? Oh, that's right, you got one.
I just, it's, yeah. Anyway.
Well, with the drought, I bet those plants were looking great.
Yeah, they, they were the best-looking part in the backyard last year, correct, so.
Let the minutes reflect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 5B. Kathy has this, but I think with this will be relatively quick. I'll let her introduce it, and then we will take the motion to postpone this item, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you. Staff is requesting tonight that the public hearing that was, um, that was set for, considering the vacation of Gardena Avenue and 151st, we're asking that it be postponed tonight. The postponement is, is requested, um, to provide additional time for the utility companies to give us feedback. We're starting to get responses, and it's important for us to get a complete picture. So with that, Mr. Mayor, again, the motion would be to postpone the public hearing until 7:00 PM, March 10th, um, to consider the vacation.
Perfect, I'll take a motion at first.
Second.
Motion from Goodman, second, from Grendel. Any other discussion on this one? If not, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And opposed, and that carries. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Pam has our next item, which is 5C, which is authorized receipt of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and Urban Affairs Committee applications through March 11th, 2022 to fill vacancies. Wow, that was awful. Pam, you'll do that better than I did, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Three committee members recently informed the city that they will be ending their service at the completion of their terms on March 1st, 2022. And those members are John Gafke, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Tim Burke, Planning Commission, and Linda Blake, Urban Affairs Advisory Committee. Staff suggests acknowledgement of their completion of service at this time. This will create a vacancy on each of these committees with a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2025. Council may wish to extend an invitation to individuals interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Committee, Planning Commission, and Urban Affairs Advisory Committee to submit an application to the city clerk by Friday, March 11th. For our listening audience who may be interested in volunteering, information regarding the responsibilities of each of these committees is posted on our website as well as the application. If the city council is ready to start the process of filling these vacancies, staff suggests council make a motion acknowledging completion of service by committee member Josh Gafke, Commissioner Tim Burke, committee member Linda Blake, directing staff to post the vacancies and inviting individuals interested in serving on any of these committees to submit an application to the city clerk by Friday, March 11th.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any questions for Pam?
We're losing a lot of experience.
We are, I was thinking the same thing, so. Do we have a motion to, uh?
Second.
A motion from Grendel, second, from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Well, that carries, again, thanks to our exiting commissioners, we literally can't do this without them. And so, we appreciate their work, and you're right, Councilmember Grendel, there's a lot of experience, uh, in there. I know we have a huge viewing audience that just heard all this, but I, can we also get this information out on our social media channels and websites so that, uh, those who might be paying more attention there than, say, to, uh, cable or the internet could see these? Perfect, thank you. Pam, is there anything else on those items?
Not on them.
Uh, council, thank you, Councilmember Melander.
I, uh, don't know the other folks, but I served with Tim Burke for over 20 years on Planning Commission, and, uh, uh, those are big shoes to fill. He's a terrific guy, level-headed, and, uh, did a terrific volunteer all those years, uh, service to the City of Apple Valley. And it brought a lot to our community.
Thanks for, thanks for mentioning that. You probably know one better than, uh, than any of us, so, thank you. We'll move on to five D, and, uh, Pam also has this item, and this is adopt a resolution to appoint a member to fill the vacancy on the EDA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On December 9th, the city council authorized accepting applications through January 14th to fill the Economic Development Authority vacancy resulting from council member Melander's appointment to the city council. The vacancy has a six-year term expiring March 1st, 2025. Notice of the vacancy was posted on the city's website and advertised in our local newspaper, and four applications were received. Those names are listed in your packet. The procedure to fill positions on commissions and committees is also included in your packet. And unless a motion is made to change the procedure during each round, you will vote for one less than the number of candidates nominated. If the city council is ready to fill that vacancy, a motion should be made to nominate the candidates. The ballots will then be distributed. Following the final vote, the city council should adopt the resolution appointing the Economic Development Authority Commissioner.
Thank you. Council members, what's your wish?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Grendel.
I'll nominate all four candidates and, um, make a motion to vote for two on the first round.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Clarify that. Vote for two.
Vote for two.
On the first one.
The first round.
Okay.
Are we good with that? All right, so we have a motion from, uh, Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Bergman, I believe. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that carries, and we'll start the, the balloting. Tom, as those, as those are tallied, do we have any, uh, staff items to, uh, to cover this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we certainly can provide a few updates for you, and I know one that was, uh, mentioned earlier was the public process to look at the intersection of County Road 46 and, uh, Pilot Knob, or Diamond Path Road. Our Public Works Director, Matt Saum, has that.
Bruce, so give, help me with the camera here, I think.
You're moving so quick, buddy.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Oh, can we zoom in just a little, Bruce?
Easier, I've got a little bigger copy in my, in my pocket. Hey, that helps quite a bit.
There we go, there we go. Um, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. Just wanted to advertise this, oh. Even, even better, advertise this meeting that, that Dakota County Transportation is hosting next Thursday, February 17th, 6:30 to 8:30. It's to consider, um, they're looking at some possible improvements down in the southeast corner of our town. Uh, 160th Street is also County Road 46, so it's at the intersection of County Road 46 and Diamond Path. Um, we have a residential in the northwest corner. On the south side in Lakeville, folks might know that's where the new Eastlake Elementary School is. So, the county is going to look at some improvements to that intersection, and, uh, folks are interested. They're invited to come to that meeting.
Perfect, thank you. All right, seems like, uh, we have, uh, we have some more balloting instructions.
Mr. Mayor, after the first round of voting, there are two names remain on the ballot. But please, select one.
So, we're selecting one name, just to be clear, and initialing the ballot. Tom, do you have something else, uh, teed up for us?
Absolutely. It appears to be a, a meeting where we're talking about a lot of our advisory committees, so the vacancies that were announced previously, and the one that we're trying to fill here with the Economic Development Authority. Just wanted to highlight that we do have one other current vacancy, and that's on the Cemetery Advisory Committee. Right. And that application period is still open, uh, through February 28th. Again, apply through the city clerk's office by 4:30 on that date. It is actually a very interesting position. Uh, we do need people to, uh, help advise the city-owned, um, cemetery that we have on 42 and Pilot Knob. If you've been by there lately, there are improvements going on in the cemetery. It actually looks very nice. And, uh, we couldn't do it without this committee, uh, that helps to advise, uh, so citizens are interested to, or encouraged to apply. Uh, it's a three-year term, ending on March 1st of 2025, a seven-member advisory committee. And, uh, they do a lot of good work for us on the cemetery. So, we would encourage people to apply to that vacancy, as well as the others that we've announced previously tonight.
And Tom, those, those applications, you folks can indicate a first and second preference for committees as well. So, if you're, please do that, I guess, as you complete those applications, that will help, uh, help fill those roles. Is that yours, Ruth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually on our consent agenda, and I was Cemetery Advisory Committee Annual Report, which I read, which was very interesting.
It is interesting.
People are interested in the Cemetery Committee, they should read that. Lot of, lot of going on, and a lot of money goes through there.
Yeah.
Actually, all the committee reports are always fun to read, so. Yeah.
Yep. Amazing what gets done in a year. Uh, I'm assuming we have, we have a, a decision, because, uh, you didn't come back with more ballots, so.
They're tired.
Mayor, the, the council has, uh, selected Jody Kurtz to the Economic Development Commission, so a motion should be in order.
Perfect, thank you.
I make a motion.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel. Do we have a second from Councilmember Bergman? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, that carries, welcome Jody, and thank you to all of our applicants. That is the last item on the, uh, regular agenda this evening. That will bring us to staff and council communications. Uh, council members, any items for you?
No.
I only, uh, I only have a couple, and I know, Tom, if you're talking about midwinterfest at, at all, um, but I can leave most of that to you. Uh, we'd just like to thank all of staff, uh, the Fire PD, Public Works, Parks, uh, for putting on a pretty cool first-year event in a new place. Um, I will say, our, our park staff in particular spent an awful lot of the day rearranging, moving, shuffling things around, making sure that, uh, the visitors, uh, had a good day. We had a little unexpected wind in the morning, it was a little brisk, uh, first thing, and, uh, and they moved around. And, uh, also thank you to the Apple Valley Arts Foundation for sponsoring our band. Um, they seemed to have a great time, even though it was super cold when they were on stage, so. Tom?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, just a, a huge, uh, acknowledgement to the work that went into holding this, uh, event. Uh, we have a long tradition of having a midwinterfest in our community, but it had been held at the Hayes Community, or the Apple Valley Community Center at Hayes Park. Uh, people felt that, uh, maybe that had kind of played itself out, and it was time to reinvigorate the event. And so, with the council's support, uh, a new event was, uh, put together at Johnny Cake Ridge Park West, and right behind Eastview High School. And, uh, I just couldn't be more proud of the, the effort that went in through our departments, or Park Department in particular. The police, as you can see in the photos here, Police Department, Fire Department, were all part of this, uh, event that we had. Uh, Mayor, you went through some of the activities that were there with the horse-tron carriages, the recycle bin, uh, races out on the ice, uh, the Police Department train using garden carts, very innovative, uh, approach. And the kids really enjoyed, uh, that activity, including the, uh, the hockey tournament for the youth in the morning. There's our mayor reading the name of a raffle ticket, uh, that was through the Apple Valley Rotary Club, uh, raising money for the community, and of course, they were a sponsor of the event as well. Uh, Apple Valley Arts Foundation, uh, with their support of the band, Riverside Hitmen, uh, being our, uh, performance that night. They did a remarkable job with that, and of course, the fireworks that then followed, so. If you weren't there, we understand. Uh, it wasn't a very pleasant day out there, the wind was stiff. Uh, obviously, a new event in a new location, uh, we need to, uh, get the word out. And, uh, we're going to do this again next year, and it's going to be even bigger and better next year, and we would encourage everybody to come out. And, uh, we also, I want to acknowledge, uh, through Diane Erickson, who you know is our volunteer coordinator, uh, the Park Department asked for, and Diane helped coordinate nearly 50 volunteers that were available to assist with all of this, uh, event over that Saturday. So, uh, we're just fortunate to, to have that kind of support in our community, to have citizens that will step forward and help us out when we do this type of, uh, new event. And, uh, we just encourage their participation going forward as well.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Grendel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think next year, it was a great event, anyway. Um, the only thing that saved me for two hours, I didn't have to go make it, was Councilmember Bergman had the little heater for my gloves. So, I think we need to have a little table selling those things for boots and our gloves next year. We actually made it the whole two hours till the fireworks.
We were, uh, we were downstairs at the Informal earlier, and Tom handed a copy of those out, and I was, uh, somebody was speaking, I looked and said, who's the old guy with the microphone? Picture of me, so, uh, um, we'll take that, I guess, so. Uh, the only other item I had, just, just to recognize, you know, a little sadder note, uh, we had to pay our respects to Bruce Erickson last week. 32 years, am I correct on that? Apple Valley PD, uh, retired a number of years ago. Um, you know, if we think of his, uh, service to Apple Valley, about 80% of Apple Valley's history involved Bruce somehow. And, uh, um, just want to publicly, uh, thank him for the service and condolences to his family on the loss, but, uh, it was great to see the respect and the turnout for his, uh, service, so, um, um, our best to their family, so. Any other items? Uh, seeing none, we have the upcoming, uh, calendar of, or the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. And a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday, the 21st, in observance of President's Day. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
A move.
Second.
Motion from Goodman, second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, last item, uh, is to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Motion from Grendel, second from Melander. Um, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.